Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this session of the Prattville Planning Commission to order. Madam Secretary, could you please call roll?
Mary Gillespie, Councilman Bowles, Chairman Smith, Vice Chair Gardner, Chief Johnson, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Hall, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McHolly, and Mr. Nelson.
All right, we have some old business. The first one is the street dedication of Eisner Lane, location Doster Road and the abnees. I think everybody got a packet on this. If you take a second to peruse it. We got some additional information from Mr. Duke. Mr. Duke, would you like to comment on this?
Inzer Lane.
Inzer Lane. Thank you for the correct, Inzer Lane.
Yes, sir, I appreciate the opportunity to report. As we talked about at the last meeting, any request for acceptance of a private street by the city, according to council resolution, comes to you for review and recommendation. And at the last meeting, mentioned that there was some question about the ownership of the property or the actual road, and we have clarified that. Specifically, you are to consider four items that you can see listed there in the staff report that I provided. Is the street compatible with the Prattville subdivision regulations? Does it meet the standard generally applied by the commission for development of public street? Is it substandard? What would it take to bring it up to standard? And what are the initial and ongoing maintenance costs to the city if the street is accepted? You can see also in their report, report from engineering department, from the fire department, and also from the planning department. Inzer Road is roughly a 1,200-foot dirt road, a 10-foot wide dirt road without any kind of formal turnaround. And because looking at what it would take to bring that up to standard, it is, since we can't get past the first two considerations, that it's not even close to your city's standards, we chose not even to really look at the cost of what it would take to bring that up. You have a chart there on page three of the report that shows Inzer Road in comparison to what it would take to meet your standards. And at this point, it's nowhere close to the buildup, construction-wise for the street. It's not paved, and it serves roughly one house. So we are recommending that it not be accepted by the city for maintenance, primarily because it doesn't meet the standard, and secondly, it functions as a driveway.
Thank you.
Our function is to advise the council?
Your function is roughly like it is with a zoning request, which is to make a recommendation to them.
To the council.
Certainly, this report, if you wish, will go forward to them with your recommendation.
Absolutely. Thank you for that option. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we pass this report on to the city council with the recommendation of not accepting the road.
That sounds like a...
I second that.
There's a second? All in favor signify our discussion. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. We'll move on to the next one. Preliminary plat, Oak Creek plat number three. We had a public meeting on this, I believe, last time. Let's see what we got. It was postponed. Did we postpone on this? Okay. Okay, we are going on to item number three. Do we have to vote on it?
I move this particular item, number two, preliminary plat, Oak Creek plat three, be held...
Do you want to talk?
I'll go ahead and let them...
Be held indefinitely.
Yes.
And that's where I need to make sure we're clear. State law basically says that you have 30 days to act on a preliminary plat, 30 days after the public hearing in which to act unless the applicant consents to it being held. The applicant in the letter that was sent asked that it be held to the next meeting. So two things that I would like to see in the motion is, one is that the applicant consents to it, and secondly, that it's just to the next meeting.
Well, that's just to the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll change my motion to be held to the next meeting, based on a request from the applicant.
All right, is there a second? All right. All in favor of holding this to the next meeting, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Now, let's move to the number three. We're cooking... All right, and this is the final plat, Pendlebrook subdivision plat 2C.
Could you read that?
I think it was read in the last time.
Was it read in the last time? This is held. Okay, we're good then. All right. Discussion, would you... What's going on with it?
Mr. Rice may need to answer that. As far as the city is concerned, and the questions we had about erosion control and whether that was adequately taken care of, those have been addressed. And as far as finishing the subdivision itself, they've had the extra time to take care of that as well. So from the city's standpoint, we would recommend approval. May I ask Mr. Rice about property?
Mr. Rice, are all things good after... I was in Troy this morning, and it was wet there. So I don't know if y'all had as much water as we did, but...
From an engineering standpoint, the property is, you know, very similar as it was last time. It's not an issue. This was an aesthetic question by the adjacent property owner. I did, after the last meeting, travel to that site immediately thereafter, and met with the property owner and explained to him that there was always planned to be a change in elevation between the two homes. At the current time, I think that change in elevation was probably about eight inches more than what was on the original construction plan, something like that. But during construction, that will be swelled down. The swell was already in place. It was draining fine. There were some questionable erosion control practices, just due to the final grassing and cleanup had not been completed, and that's all complete now.
Any questions from Mr. Rice? Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that?
Do we need to move the rank back up? No, sir, it was just held. It was just held, okay? Thank you.
All right. Are y'all ready to vote on it? All right. All in favor of the Pendlebrook subdivision plat 2C, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. It looks like everybody voted on that until it is passed. All right, we will go on to item number four. And it is a public hearing, thank you. And it appears that it's Rocky Mount Road, Old Farm Lane, Spencer Swan is petitioner. How are you doing today, sir? Do you want to tell the public what we have, and then we will have everybody come in and talk to us? All right, what we got?
Again, I'm Greg Gillis, Larry's speaking and associates and representing Mr. Swan and his family. And the property is located here at the intersection of Rocky Mount Road and Old Farm Lane. And this is the new Old Farm Lane, and it's just been reconstructed. The old Farm Lane was the dirt road that made the bad, it's dirt now. It is a paved road, and it did the bad for North of Woe. And the purpose is to go ahead and have the property annexed in an initial zoning for R4 or muck it down. The other side here shows, a more sketch, it shows the actual blockaded roadway as it was constructed here.
Thank you.
It's 32.14 acres, sits back on the backside of the interstate. The Presidential Academy ball fields up in this area here, and then this is Falcon Lane here, here, Falcon Lane here. Methodist Church has a cemetery located in this particular area. Sort of isolated, back close to the interstate. I think Joe will talk about it with some of his reports, and he's got the land in Madison, so...
How much property?
32 acres.
32 acres. All right. This is a public hearing. We are the Prattville Planning Commission, and we are all up here as volunteers. Everybody here is here voluntarily. We have one that is an employee, but he is here as a volunteer as well, somewhat. But we are here to listen to any concerns, questions, comments from the public, and I will have a public hearing. And at the end, when everybody's answered questions, I will say the end of the public hearing. Don't go anywhere. It just means that then we vote on it, or we talk about it. But this is a public hearing, and the public is encouraged to come and register with Ms. Morgan and ask us any question that you want to ask us. It's open. Y'all come on down. Come on in, Mrs. Finneigan. And tell us who you are and your address when you come on and talk to us.
I'm Janet Jones, I can worry.
Not that we don't know where you work and...
No, I'm the farmland landowner, and the business owner we went from. Hi, I'm John Lee Finneigan. I'm at 211 Deer Trace Street up here in Hunting Ridge. And my main concern is, as you are aware of, the problem we had with Rochester Hill development, because that had been zoned R4 many years ago, and then the housing or the apartment development was going in. And that was only 96 units on 10 acres, and of course, we're talking about 32 acres. And my concern is, and of course, also Montgomery, you've heard about Montgomery, where they're building that Walmart grocery store, and how that area has developed, and traffic seems to be the main concern. And when I looked at the map, Joel was good enough to send me the map, and they're talking about the annexation, and I don't know if he will be able to answer whatever, but I'm very concerned, because it says, "The zoning request accompanies an annexation petition under consideration by the city council." And when I look at the map of where the Swan property is, and I don't know if you have this in front of you, it has the outline of the Prattville city limits. I don't know if they're just talking about that particular parcel or other parcels. And if you look along Rocky Mount, and is it on here? Yeah, I have this also. But if you look along Rocky Mount, which is right there, I'm sorry, I didn't have a color printer, but we have this great big piece of property, and then we have all these that are not in the city limits. So if they then annex that, that is more development. And of course, you're approving or going, probably approve the Glenbrook. That is adding a lot of single-family homes. That is a very highly packed area. So when you think about an R4 emptying either to the exit, the 14, I-65, or even onto Cobb's Ford Road to 65, that is already pretty congested. I don't know if any of you have tried to get on to 65, especially going south when you're heading east, but to try to cut over with traffic and stuff like that, and you get a lot of people cutting in. And now we have Long Lewis going in on 14. That, no doubt, is going to be another developed area. So we're going to have a tremendous amount of traffic anyway because of the development. And if this is just the start of the development, there's only, it looks like there's only going to be two corridors for this to empty out, either Rocky Mount or Old Farm Lane. And I'm just worried that on 32 acres, if you can have 96 on 10 acres, how many apartment complexes? Plus, they also talked previously about, they could go higher, too, so it could be even more than that. We were talking about two stories. I'm very concerned that there's not a plan of what they want. In fact, it says, "Applicant is requesting to prezone the applicant's annexation request for the same property is currently being reviewed. Applicant has not indicated a specific use of the property other than allowing it to be marketed for high-density residential." And I think it would be very premature for you to okay an R4 zoning without having any kind of idea. If this was an entity into itself, you know, out in the country or something, that's fine. But this area is going to be very, very, very built up. And I think if we get the R4 in there, it's just going to be adding a lot of traffic without knowing how much is going in there. And again, when I look at that map, and unfortunately, I have no idea what they're talking about annexation, whether it is just the Swan or even this property, because if you look, it's very, it's very cut up. Look at this big piece of property here that they could be, and even over here. That's going to be a lot, a lot of traffic. And I think before any decision is made, find out how much property is going to be annexed into the Prattville city limits, what the future developments are. As we know, like I said, Long Lewis is coming on. I've heard of Burger King's going in on 14. Who knows if it's going to be a big box next to Long Lewis? We don't know. But that's going to be also bringing in a lot of traffic. And Old Farm Lane is lovely now, and I was also under the impression that this is where log trucks were going to be routed to, because it'd be a direct route going around by the golf course, straight in over to the International Paper. So if we're now talking about routing and getting log trucks to go on that Old Farm Lane, I mean, that's a big accidents waiting to happen. And I haven't seen any plans either for traffic lights. So if you don't have any kind of traffic control there, maybe those are going in. I don't know. And that's the whole thing. So before you start saying, "Let's put high-density in here," let's see what the plans are. Let's go. And again, after that fiasco with Rochester Hills, and who knew 23 years ago or 22 years ago how Cobb's Ford and McQueen Smith were going to grow up? And look at it now. I moved here 25 years ago, and I can remember vividly how, you know, simple and unencumbered that was. And now we have growth. So that's my main concern. I think it's premature to vote on zoning before the annexation, to know how much property is going to be annexed in, which is going to then talk about the development and hold off, and at least get some idea, if they want it for multifamily, then find out what they have in mind. I can't say, "Oh, yeah, go ahead and zone it," but we don't have any idea what we're going to put in there. That just doesn't make sense. And 32 acres scares me, because as I said with the Rochester, that was only 10 acres, and they were going to put 160 on 16 acres. Remember when they wanted to have that other property zoned? So it just, I just think time, I don't think there needs to be a rush on doing this right now. I think it needs to be just held and find out, and when the time comes, go ahead and develop it. Also, I have not heard anything on the widening or what is going to happen to Rocky Mount. Is it going to divided four lane? Is it going to, what is it going to become? Because I don't know if any of you have driven it, I'm sure you have. You know, there's a lot of blind spots and curves and things that needs to be considered. So that's all. I'm just, I'm very concerned because of not only past incidences here, but also just the big news coverage in Montgomery. Because an area was zoned something, and then it grew up, and the traffic became a tremendous problem. And I think that's going to happen here, too. And again, with those close interchanges, I mean, for getting on to 65, I think that's, we're in for major trouble.
Thank you, Ms. Finneigan.
That's it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Doing well, sir?
I'm Jim Cobb. I live at 2364 Rocky Mount Road, and our property borders the property, the Swan property there. And we've got some questions. We've got, is there a, evidently, there's no development plan in play here. Am I correct? Mr. Gillis, no, no development plan. So is it typical to zone an area without a development plan? I'm like this, I'm sorry. Is it typical to zone something without a plan of what's going there? Is that, it's not? So, I mean, how does that, how's that all going to work? And another thing that I'm curious about is the access to and from the property. Is it going to be accessed off of Old Farm Lane, or is it going to be accessed off of Rocky Mount Road? Those are some questions that, to me, seem like they need to be answered before it's zoned one way or the other. Because as Ms. Finneigan had stated, Rocky Mount, as it stands now, is a two-lane road. And if you start putting multifamily housing on a two-lane road, you're going to get awfully crowded. Plus, we have a business on Rocky Mount Road. And, you know, so it's, in my opinion, that's stretching it pretty thin. There's just some questions that need to be answered, in my opinion, of what's going on. And that's basically all I'd like to say, is, you know, that there's some questions, and we need to answer these questions before we go and dump all this zoning out there. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions? Any other comments?
One, you don't have Rocky Mount.
Come on, come on up here. I can't, we got to speak into, no, just come on, it's fine. Just come on in, sign in, and tell us who you are, and we want to know. And then they like to speak in the microphone, because people that watch it on the internet can't hear you, and so they'll want to know. But come on in and speak it, and speak to us.
I'm Sharon Cobb.
Hey, Ms. Cobb.
And we own Rocky Mount weddings and events.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not listed on the papers that Jim had, as far as what's close to the property.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, same thing as they said, but we would definitely like to have a little more information before y'all made your decision, if possible. Thank you.
That is, thank you. Any other folks like to come down here and talk to us? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this. Would somebody like to read this in here? Good, thank you.
Resolution, rezoning, zoning request to R4, Rocky Mount Road at Old Farm Lane, Spencer Swan, petitioner, April 16, 2015. Whereas Spencer Swan has applied for zoning of the property, described an attachment A and shown an attachment B, and whereas the property to be zoned is located outside the city limits on Old Farm Lane and Rocky Mount Road, and whereas the petitioner wishes to zone the property to R4 multifamily residential, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on April 16, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends the zoning of said property to R4. So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, sir. Joel?
Going to probably take a little longer than it ordinarily would on a rezoning. I talk about Old Farm Lane, because in general, we've kind of known this day was coming, where somebody would want to start looking at, start looking at development between the two, let's just call them, interchanges or between the two nodes of commercial that we have created. For those of you who've been on the commission a long time, you know that it's always been looked at, that there was a node of commercial here at Cobb's Ford Road and a node of commercial up at 14. And that was part of the impetus to actually go forward with the project to widen Old Farm Lane. Obviously, it could not live as it was as a simple county road. It needed to be improved. And when we made those improvements, we designed it in such a way that it would handle roughly the same amount of traffic as Cobb's Ford Road. The other consideration that was taken when designing Old Farm Lane was limited access. And those access points, as you can see by the way, the medians were basically run along that stretch, is, we intend to enforce that. We've learned from experience, and certainly y'all have, that you can look at the progression of East Main Street, Cobb's Ford Road. The first era of development was right there at Silver Hills Drive, up to about McQueen Smith. You have virtually unlimited access. That's probably our most accident-prone, congested area in that stretch. As we moved further out, as we went from McQueen Smith out to roughly where US 82 came in, we started trying to crank down on the access. And these are proven methods to make sure that a road functions both for access and for moving traffic. We will continue to be a major exporter of people and importer of people in the evenings. We've got to move traffic. And so Old Farm Lane continues that thinking. It cannot be degraded into a roadway that has unlimited access. Otherwise, taxpayers have spent a lot of, upgraded that road and will not be getting what they expected. So as we look at what needs to happen land use-wise on Old Farm Lane, in the 2010 comprehensive plan, we looked at, would this be another commercial corridor? And based on market studies, and based on what we know about the amount of commercial we have available now, it was really considered to be a secondary option. Commercial really should not be allowed to appear all the way up and down Old Farm Lane. So there was a category created in the land use plan called mixed-use transitional that allowed for these uses that are, most of them work well with each other. Higher-density residential is one of those. Interstate-oriented businesses, not really service businesses, but folks that need interstate access to move their products. Even some, when I say light manufacturing, that is a very broad category. That is not your industrial park-type use. But it could be some kind of well-done warehouse-type uses. All of those can exist very well together if you make sure that the transitions between the uses are well done. And so that's where this corridor is going to evolve over time. Old Farm Lane will be basically the backbone of the corridor, we expect, and y'all have already started with the exchange on the north side, where Rebecca Motors is going in and have a rig extended north from there, kind of creating a shadow access road for that property on the west side of Old Farm Lane. You're going to see over time a similar type of network created on the east side. So this is really an evolving, we're getting in the first look at what's going to happen in this area. Obviously, there's going to have to be some improvements to Rocky Mount Road. What those are at this point, we can't really say. What those are at this point, uh, we can't really say. And, and to be honest with you, there's not a high enough demand traffic-wise to, to really warrant that. While there's congestion now on McQueen Smith Road South, that road has carried, uh, traffic adequately for a number of years, even as development is taking place on either side of it. So, um, you know, Rocky Mount Road will, will suffice for a good bit longer, especially since there's not much on in this corridor. But we have to plan for it, we have to be aware. A lot of what Ms. Finnegan is mentioning is certainly valid. You've got to be aware of what's happening, and y'all, y'all tend to do that. Y'all are the folks that are more informed and have a much longer viewpoint than, than most, the average citizens. With that background, though, we need to talk about this specific zoning request. Uh, this, uh, roughly thirty-two acres, uh, sits at, at a intersection that affords it access to both roads. Uh, it sits in this corridor, it's been defined where high-density or higher-density residential is an acceptable and a desired use. So it, it meets your, your master plan. Timing, um, certainly you could, you could wait. Uh, there's nothing that says you have to zone it at this point. But we consistently receive requests for areas for multifamily housing. Uh, that's not because folks are necessarily trying to create a market, there is a market for multifamily housing. There is a, a transition is taking place in the economy, in the housing market. Uh, there are more renters and people that desire to be a renter, not looking for a, a single-family residential home. This, this is an area that affords good access to both Prattville and its amenities that have shown up over the last decade, and to Montgomery for employment. So we expect to see more pressure for, for multifamily. And with all that in mind, I, I would say that, that this request is, um, is, is consistent with your plan, is consistent with what has been the thinking on Old Farm Lane, and, and is certainly, um, something that can be recommended at, at this point. As far as logistics are concerned, this, this property, uh, there is a, an application for, or a petition for annexation that is moving, basically in a concurrent line, it's going to the city council. Uh, if this makes it to the city council first, and they have the ability to pre-zone a piece of property based on, uh, changes in state law several years ago, uh, that, that pre-zoning is valid for, I believe, a hundred and eighty days. So, essentially, you can define what the property would be zoned once it was annexed in. As far as annexation of these other properties, uh, I, I can tell you that I expect that they will all show up in the city limits at some point.
All being, all being basically everything between Rocky Mount Road and Highway fourteen.
Yes, sir, right now, as far as timing, uh, state law basically puts annexation, puts the, puts the property owner in control in the annexation process. There's only one, one permitted process, which is a legislative annexation that the city has a good bit to say. But the other two processes, and the one that we primarily see, which is petition, puts the, the property owner in control. They have to request to be in the city. As, as we'll talk about on, on another item on your agenda, um, the city has a, a provision that says that you can't extend city sewer to a piece of property without it being in the city limits or the city council giving specific permission. So, in the end, if you, if you wish to develop the property, if you like to see something higher density than, than can be accommodated by a subject tank, you generally gonna have to come into the city. So that, that really leads me to that conclusion, is that eventually you will see all of this in the city. It could be a number of years, but if you're gonna see development on the property, they'll want it in the city, not only for sewer, but also for, uh, Chief Johnson's fire protection.
I guess the question to me was that typically you might see commercial stuff in front and residences in the back. And I, I guess that says, well, maybe they got a better idea of what they're gonna do with it than they're saying.
It, it could be, and I, you know, that's, that's something I can't answer, the applicant would have to answer.
Yeah, I understand that, so.
And it could be that, as I, as we see often, what you'll see is a request for some type of change in zoning again as, as the property develops. There, there are some topographic limitations on the back edge of this property. And I'm sorry, we don't have that as a part of your, your packet, I'm not sure if it's on Mr. Gillen's. This is Interstate sixty-five here. As this property falls off toward the interstate, it gets to be rather, uh, this, this rocky, this year of the heat. It's probably gonna put some limitations on the, whether or not all thirty-two acres can be developed efficiently. So I expect at some point you're gonna see maybe a request for something else. But that doesn't preclude zoning that R four now. We, we see the, we see that all the time. I think what's important for the city, and I know there are many different opinions about multifamily housing, from the perspective as your, as your planner and looking at making sure there's housing and a mixture of housing available in the city, there needs to be someplace for R four. And as much trouble as the city has in rezoning for R four where there is already development, for, for a myriad of reasons, and some of them valid, some of them not, um, this is a good place to, to allow some R four to be, to exist. I don't think you're gonna see it on the market that long. There's that much demand, as you've seen. And it's not just what you've just seen with Rochester Hills, you've just seen two other complexes in recent memory that have come in, both in the home place development, that I, I can't see anybody making, anybody having any kind of heartburn with those two developments. Primarily because of where they were located. They were located away from other developments. Uh, they, um, you know, been well done, and that, that is the type of multifamily that you're probably gonna see more of.
Question, the triangle north of this, between bordered by the, by this property and the interstate and PCA property, no. That, that one, I, I ask ahead of time, and it belongs to the property across the street. Right? Yeah. Go.
The other thing I expect that you will see is some kind of subdivision that will have to come in here. There, there may, depending on how it develops, there may have to be roads that run through the site, and they'll be, this is not the last time you're gonna see this before somebody proposes a development, in my opinion. There, there might be a complex or something multifamily that comes in of that size, but not generally. It's, that's a lot of units you can put on that, on that property.
Any questions for Mr. Duke?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, with this, uh, R four, Mr. Duke, as of right now, we wouldn't know how many units could possibly go into that thirty-two acre site, plus the fact with, uh, Pine Creek Development. You know, can we all take anymore sewer and, you know? Building height, do we have a limitation on the, how, how the building can be?
Yes, sir, you have a, a height limitation in R four, and I just, off the top of my head, hold on just a second. Uh, you're basically limited to a maximum height in R four of thirty-five feet, so roughly three stories.
What about the, um, sewer? There's a question on sewer.
Your other question about sewer is, um, kind of an evolving one. Each and every development starts to cut into your Pine Creek, uh, capacity. I have asked the Westwater Department, and I've asked the Polyworks Director, uh, for some kind of determination, you know, where is the cutoff point? And I've said, i-if that is gonna become a consideration, you need to let the planning commission know well ahead. Because it, obviously, like this piece of property is about to be, if, if this goes through, is about to be marketed in, in certain way. And folks need to be aware of whatever limitations there might be. The city's not putting any kind of moratorium at this point on Westwater. In fact, we're not even close to that. The only, only reason I bring it up oftentimes is that if we're looking like, like we were at the last meeting at the Glenbrook subdivision, that is a multi-year project and has a very high number of units. It, it obviously has to be a consideration in this whole corridor, but not with this one specific piece of property. That, the city is moving in, in two different tracks. One, we're looking at how much can we absorb, but they're also moving forward with improvements to the plan, so.
But, Mr. Duke, as of right now, I think that Pine Creek can only expand, uh, one more stage. And we are looking at, uh, I think it's, it's a stage three right now. We may be able to go to a four because of land, land usage. And we're pretty much at capacity now. So we talking about, what, another seventeen to twenty million dollars development? Once we finish with, once that is developed, then where do we go? And if we start in taking, um, a lot of development, and we don't know how we can expand that at some point in time, A dam can close.
Yes, sir, I'm not gonna disagree with you. If the city doesn't make any improvements to Pine Creek, there is a, a point at which it, its capacity has exceeded. And we're not at that point yet. And, and I'm not, uh, not raising any kind of alarm that we are. What I'm saying is that that is something that y'all rightly, as the planning commission, with the folks with a long time horizon, need to be aware of. Can the plan accommodate every piece of property in this corridor? Absolutely not. But we're not talking about every piece. If we're just talking about this one piece, if we're just talking about the Glenbrook subdivision at the stages that, that, where we are now, Pine Creek can easily accommodate that. But, and there are, the city is moving in, in the direction of upgrading that plant roughly to, to five-point-seven million gallons per day. So, I, I expect that all of that will come together very well. Y'all need to be in a position where you know when that's gonna happen and how it's gonna happen. But if you're asking whether or not we can accommodate this piece of property now, yes, we can.
Any other questions for Mr. Duke? Discussion? All right. Mr. Gillen, you're hidden behind the pup, pup thing, and I can't see you, so. I kinda forgot about you almost.
Everybody's sitting there.
Yeah, moving on, we can see you.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Gillen?
Do you have any idea how many units they're talking about, or what?
Well, we took a look at that, and we considered splitting the property approximately in that. And I looked at the lower half.
Come on over here to the microphone, 'cause, 'cause I'm gonna get fussed out about.
I looked at the lower half, which had terrain issues, and we're thinking a hundred and fifty units for just, say, half the property. And obviously, the, the upper piece, we could get a hundred and fifty units in, so that would be a total of three hundred at a minimum, I think.
Three hundred.
Property. And, uh, as Joel talked about, you know, something might, else might happen with the corner piece down the line if something were to happen. So, you know, three hundred units would be a minimum part to that, I would say. Possibly maybe up to four total if the whole property was developed with apartments.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The way the property is laid out, you've got the ability to access two different roads.
Yes.
Using the fifty percent rule of the diagonal distance, do you foresee any problem getting your remote, your exit remoteness based on that fifty percent? Um, 'cause I don't really know what the overall plan's gonna be. In other words, if you go diagonal distance from corner to corner, take half of that, that's basically what you're needing to try to do to put your access points on the remoteness part? It looks like we're tight there, is?
Yeah, we have to access here, and then we have this whole area here to also to access.
Okay.
We've always envisioned a loop in here, basically.
For the multifamily?
Yes.
Okay.
Something similar to Highland Lakes.
Okay, so you-
I'm talking about the fire department.
A hundred and, a hundred and fifty with a single access?
Yes, if that's permitted. And if it's not, then we'd have to work out another access scenario.
I do not think that's permissible.
Well, then at that point, we'd have to put, again, that would be if we separated. I mean, if it was all in one development, we'd have an access at both points.
Okay, so I mean, you've got a plan either way.
Well, I mean, it's just a very sketchy plan.
Gotcha.
We're just trying to count units.
Go on. You have a call?
Now, my, my guess is that before this is all said and done, twenty years from now, that we'll see lots more R fours on this, on this corridor than just this one. This is, this is almost first come, first served.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously, it is.
Any discussion?
Well, I wanna say, this does meet with the future land use that we had talked about, with the comprehensive plan. And I like that it is such a large piece of property, rather than ten, five or ten acres, and then come back and want five more acres, you know, so that people purchasing on either, well, the school's on one side, and it is on the corner. So it is kind of isolated. I mean, like, you know what's gonna be, who your neighbor is gonna be. And I, I like that it's such a big part of that, that anybody buying around there would know ahead of time that that's what this is.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion?
Might review the process. Our, our recommendation for rezoning goes to city council.
Yes, sir, what will happen, uh, from here, just a review, 'cause we don't see that many rezonings, but, uh, you're gonna see a lot more, unfortunately, uh, in the next couple of weeks, because there are a number of annexations. But, uh, what happens is you make a recommendation, and it then gets transmitted to the city council, goes on their first available, uh, agenda. Uh, they read it for the first time and set a public hearing, and then it lays over for roughly a month. So, uh, the timing is right. I, I, if it comes out of planning commission today, it will go for the first meeting in May, which I'm not sure of that date. Um, the first Tuesday in May, then the, um, first Tuesday in June would be the first time they could actually consider it. They don't have to vote on it the first Tuesday in June, but they, uh, they, they will hold a public hearing, and then they will be able to vote on that. Uh, they, they may elect to wait and run it concurrently with the annexation. So it could, they could hold the public hearing and just kinda hold it, consideration of it. So, that'll be up to them, but it will, it will move forward from here. If it comes out of the commission with a recommendation, it will be on the first meeting in, in May, and then have a public hearing at their first meeting in June.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? All? Well, what we would do would be vote to recommend that the city council consider this for R four. Is, um, what we have before us. And all those in favor of moving this on to the city council? And all those in favor of moving this on to the City Council? It has been read in. It has been, yes. All those in favor of moving this to the City Council for consideration for R4, please do so by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There's, does that go through with? Okay, okay.
For rezoning, yes.
For rezoning. Our next one is number five. It is a public hearing for the zoning of R3 and R5. It is Glenbrook subdivision, David Avant petitioner. Mr. Rice is here. It's going to be...
It's part of an annexation thing.
Yep. It is the R5. We have looked at this before, haven't we?
Yeah, we've looked at the sketch plan.
We looked at the sketch plan.
It's a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. I think we know, but it is a, this is a public hearing for the R5, and it is part of Glenbrook subdivision. Would anybody like to come and speak on this? All right, Mr. Rice, will you like to come up and tell anybody that's here that wants to ask a question? And then I'll let you talk if nobody wants to ask a question after you talk to us for just a second.
Yeah, this one's pretty standard. It's in line with the sketch plan that was approved. This is two different zoning classifications, they're the same zoning classifications that we've been currently developing in Glenbrook, the R3, which is the standard front-loaded single-family homes, and the R5, which are the smaller rear, rear, zero-lot line rear-access homes that have already been constructed, more of that.
Okay. It is still a public hearing. I just wanted Mr. Rice to tell us what was going on in case anybody wanted to ask a question. Are there any questions? Public hearing is closed. Now, we have the whole deal. Let's go ahead and read this in. Mr. McCauley, could you please read it in for me?
Resolution, zoning request to R3 and R5 Glenbrook subdivision 4A, David Avant petitioner, April 16, 2015. Whereas David Avant has applied for zoning of the property in attachment, and whereas the property to be rezoned is located outside the city limits in the Glenbrook subdivision, and whereas the petitioner wishes to zone the property from R3, single-family residential, and R5 patio garden homes, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on April 16, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends that the zoning of said property to R3 and R5. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. And we've had our public hearing. What we got? Go ahead, you want to start off?
I really don't have anything additional to say on this.
Okay, that's good.
A question, and maybe it's a question for Mr. Duke, but does, with this annexation, does this get all the property all going to do in the city limits? Are we going to do this again and again? I guess I'm asking, the question I'm asking is, we're going to do this again and again? Okay.
Yes, sir, I can answer that question. This annexation and rezoning request, obviously there wouldn't be a rezoning request without an annexation request, is for this flat, this 128 lots, which at current rate will last about a year and a half to two years, something along those lines if they keep building at the rate they're currently at. The existing property owner is selling this property in these flats. My client is purchasing this property as a whole right now, and at the next flat will purchase an additional property, as y'all have noticed, that are usually 100 to 125 lots at a time. The current property owner owns a very large area of property in that area and is not inclined to annex as a whole at this time.
Thank you. That's, you answered my question, that we get to do it again and again. It's okay.
That is it, Mr. Duke. Would anybody like to hear from Mr. Duke on this matter? All here to Mr. Duke.
I'll go ahead and mention that this is completely in keeping with the sketch plan that was approved at your last meeting, which was a revision to a sketch plan that was approved basically a year ago. So this has been well documented, well discussed, is very consistent, both the R3 and the R5. The only thing I would note is that the document we've got shows, was presented, the legal descriptions are accurate, but the map that was presented shows R5 where it should be R3, and R3 where it should be R5. So just make sure that the R5 is, these little bits, these little dots here.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. It's okay. We'll cover it. As discussed at sketch plan, and again, we've talked about sketch plan a good bit, and we'll talk a little bit more further down the agenda about the actual preliminary plat. This is consistent with the city's comp plan, is consistent with the sketch plan, recommend approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? And again, I did read his comments, and I see where we got that part in the next section.
Yes, I got a little concerned about that, but it was my recollection that we did, that I did, you know, agree on my client's behalf to, no lots pass this without dedication of the block itself.
Thank you. I'm glad we have an understanding. Thank you.
He's a good man.
Yeah, thank you.
And I have cleared that with a stone mark, and they perfectly understand.
That is great. I'm, thank you. Any other discussion?
Call for questions, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Let's move on to the next thing, and that is, is that replat on?
Yeah, number six.
Number six.
Yeah, it's not to talk about it.
Is a replat, looks like the one by Outback, is that correct, or what's going on? Come on up and tell us about it.
Hello, good afternoon, I'm Catherine Porter, and I'm here on behalf of All South Corporation, and also representing the owner, DHS Holdings One, on this piece of property. And I believe you'll find in your packet a letter requesting that the replat of exchange at Home Place One be held until next month.
Okay, got it. Well, we going to need to vote on to hold it, or we just going, we just going?
The motion.
Okay, is there a motion to hold it? Is there a second?
You've got to have a motion to approve it first, don't you?
Yes, it's automatic on your agenda, so.
Okay, it's good then.
They're good.
You can second.
It's good. I second, yeah.
All right, all in favor of holding it for next meeting, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Let's go to seven. Okay. What's that? This is a public hearing?
I don't know.
All right, this is Glenbrook. Is this Part 4A? Is this the same one we just did, or is this, I don't know? What are we looking at, Mr.? What we got? The zoning was first, and then this is the...
Now before you is the actual preliminary plat.
Okay.
Application.
Got it. The first one was zoning, okay. I understand. I got it. All right, this is a public hearing, and the public is encouraged, and anybody that wants...
That's my line.
Well, you can come and talk about them.
She needs to come up here.
Yeah, we are, close the public hearing. Is there any discussion?
We need to read it in.
We need to read it in. Would you like to read, who would like to, Ms. Nelson, what are you, what are the one of y'all?
What is that, number 10?
Number seven. That's it.
Resolution, preliminary plat, Glenbrook subdivision phase 4A, April 16, 2015. Whereas Trivia Construction LLC is the developer of Glenbrook subdivision plat 4-7, and whereas the proposed development is located outside the city limits of Glenbrook Boulevard and Barclay Street, and whereas the initial sketch plan was approved on May 16, 2013, at Glenbrook subdivision phase 3 and 6, endorsing the alignment plan of O'Ridge Road, and whereas a revised sketch plan was approved for the development on September 18, 2014, and whereas a revised sketch plan was approved for the development on March 19, 2015. Whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review on the submitted preliminary plat of Glenbrook subdivision plat 4A. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Second, there is a second. Any more discussion on this? All in favor? Signify by raising your right hand if we're not going to do it. No, you want to know about the park? I thought we just talked about it. All right, let's talk about the park.
Y'all just like hearing me talk down. Once again, on the item that it's specific to, my Stone Martin builders, I have discussed the park with them, and they have, they are understood that no lots pass this preliminary plat will be recorded in the City of Prattville until a lot is dedicated, I mean, the park property is dedicated in its full 10 acres.
Thank you. Now, is there any questions for Mr. Rice?
Can you speak that in dirt for me, please?
Mr. Duke, do you have anything? I get ready to go, I guess I'm...
There was a whole bunch of questions that y'all had, the engineer had, and the fire had, I presume that y'all resolved them.
We are in the process of resolving them, but I, having spoken with Mr. Rice, I don't see any reason that we can't come to some agreement. The only, the real question we've got at this point, or my primary question, is about drainage, and we're working through that. If y'all were to approve a contingent, and we find ourselves unable to work them out, then we'll just bring it back to you, so.
Okay. All right. Are we, are we good? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Is there any other business, anything else? Any miscellaneous items?
I talked informally with a couple of you about a work session that I'm looking at first of June to cover several items, one being obviously Old Farm Lane, and just to start talking about, reminding some of us of the buried questions. I just wonder if there are other topics that you would like to discuss? If you just let me know, we can try to work that in. We have access to the fire department training facility, we have the ability to set up across the street in our conference room. I think it's healthy to just kind of lay some maps out on tables. We've done it periodically at times and look at these corridors and understand them outside of a meeting. You get in here, you get site-specific, is also an opportunity for y'all to ask some in-depth questions. So like I say, we're looking at first of June. If there's something else, Mr. Carter, I'm hoping to get the Polite Works Director and the engineer that's working for them to come and give y'all a briefing. Just to let you know, there is an overall basin-wide plan for the Pine Creek system.
Yeah, we do need from them, you know, some magic number.
Yeah, I'd like to have that.
Minus 20%, but we just need a number, and that's where it is.
Yes, sir.
Just respect it.
And that's what I want them to give you. What we've given them is growth projections, and what we've tried to do, working with them in that study, has helped them understand that, for instance, there was a study done in 2003, it's what they were living on since then, and it was a well-done study. What we found is with the comprehensive plan update and with market changes, is that the city's density levels keep going up. That's a good, that's a good thing on many fronts. It comes from service provision, fire protection, police protection, picking up garbage, providing sewer. Density is a, is a good thing because it leads to some real efficiencies. You don't have to have as many stations to cover as much geography. So I think from an urban form, our city has developed in a very good fashion, but from providing services, meeting those demands is sometimes where your plan catch-up. So I want to make sure y'all are well-informed, and we're going to start with that work session in June. We'll get that date set as soon as possible. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Anything else? Meeting is done.